Which is the warrant for the general election per RSA 65:1, general election warrant. And Diane, I'm just going to read it, right?
Yeah, that's it.
So, "State of New Hampshire, to the inhabitants of Newton in the county of Rockingham, New Hampshire, you are hereby notified to meet at the fire rescue station located at 8C Merrimack Road on Tuesday, the third day of November 2020. The polls will be open between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. to act upon the following subjects: to bring in your votes for President and Vice President of the United States, Governor, United States Senator, United States Representative, Executive Counselor, State Senator, State Representatives, and County Officers. Given under our hands and seal this sixth day of October in the year of our Lord 2020, signed by," and I'm going to look for a motion to sign this from a board member, but I'll just state at the end, it says "the selectmen of Town of Newton." So, does anybody want us to sign this, the motion?
I move to sign the general election warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trish?
I believe, Larry can correct me, but it's not 8C like Charlie, it's 8D like David.
Is it?
It's D.
It's D, the building?
D.
Okay. I still think we should sign this, though.
And so do I.
Do we get white out, or? I think they'll find us, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just waiting on those lawsuits if somebody stands at 8C all day and doesn't realize we're at 8D. All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so, we'll pass this around at the end to sign it, but we will move on to letter B now. So, our Senator, State Senator Tom Sherman is here with a legislative update. So, Senator, if you want to grab the mic, welcome.
Is it okay to take off the mask while you talk?
Everybody cool with that? I think so.
You're more than six feet, yes.
Thanks.
That's the only way we'll know it's you, too.
It kind of muffles things. I wear a mask all day at work, so I'm used to them. So, for the record, my name is State Senator Tom Sherman. I am State Senator for District 24. And I have been here a few times to talk about what we're doing, and this is the, and I wanted to bring you up to date on the last legislative session and what we're continuing to do in the middle of COVID. During the last legislative session, as you know, the, we wanted to make sure that rather than downshifting onto towns' expenses and costs and other things, we actually, this time, for the first time in almost eight years, were able to give back to property taxpayers in the form of unrestricted grants totaling statewide $40 million. For Newton, that's $48,434 per year of the biennium. We also gave back $138 million in public education aid on top of the state, the usual state amount that would be given. And through CARES Act funding, and I think you all know these numbers, that Newton received about $117,500 through Gopher, through, from the CARES Act. I just wanted to talk about a few bills and then what we've been doing legislatively. The way the process worked this past year was a first for the state of New Hampshire. As you know, COVID hit in March, and we had to stop meeting. What we did at that point was virtually nothing. We were in a state of emergency. What I did, as some of you know, was I started calling towns together to enhance communication. And we had the superintendents of schools for the different areas. We had, and for Newton, I think Selecton Michaels was the representative from Newton at these meetings. We talked about any issues that the towns needed state assistance with during the COVID crisis. And this became really critical for my Seacoast towns. We were meeting weekly all through the summer, making sure communication was open. And then we had what we called the inland towns also meeting if they felt they needed to be there. And it really enhanced communication. I brought PPE to at least six towns that needed it on an urgent basis, and we were able to connect them to the EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, and Perry Plummer until his retirement, and now it's Jen Harper who's there. And by the way, that offer is always open, so if there's anything you all need, or Department of Public Works, or emergency, on an emergency basis, it's been very successful, either providing it ourselves by running a car down here with masks, or more commonly connecting the people who need it, just sort of underscoring the need with the EOC. But the, from the legislative side, we ended up doing about three, three to four months' worth of work in about five weeks. And we took, the Senate worked very closely together. It was completely bipartisan. We created omnibus bills that we turned into amendments, and those amendments were attached to bills that had cleared the House. And then, once we created those, we had to have hearings on them, and we had hearings on them, passed them back through the Senate, and went back to the House for the House to either concur or not concur. That means agree with or not agree with the bill as amended. So, we were able to put well over 250 bills into 21 bills, 21 omnibus bills. And what's remarkable about that is we prioritized. We worked with the House side, and this was not Democrats or Republicans, this was everybody. So, the bills were able to be prioritized. First priority was COVID, essential COVID bills. Second priority was high priority for the state, and the third priority was maybe it can wait. And so, the ones that were maybe it can wait, those got tabled. So, there's a lot of work, almost 400 bills, still to come back from last session into the new session. But some of the amended House bills are amazing, in my view. We were able to pass bills protecting children, protecting women. We were able to pass bills that the, that the agencies really badly needed. On the healthcare side, we were able to incorporate, for example, telemedicine. I think many of you know that telemedicine was really in its infancy before COVID. And if you think about a war, like World War II, or even more importantly, the Civil War, that was a time in medicine where you saw huge advances in surgery and delivery of care. This war, the COVID war, is all about telemedicine from a healthcare standpoint. We are now leading the nation as a state because of this amendment that brought in three bills that were preexisting and waiting to be passed. And then we took Governor Sununu's emergency order and put that into statute as well. That means that for the North Country, for example, if they don't have access to a computer, everybody has access to a phone. And now, that inner counter is possible, telephonic. It was never previously covered by your insurance company. I had, at the last minute, I had to have a one-on-one with the CEO of Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Hampshire to iron out just one or two words to make sure we could get this amendment through. And Senator Bradley and I co-sponsored the amendment, and it went through. And now, we are leading the country in the delivery of telemedicine and how that whole process works, including bringing that to people who have mental health issues or substance use issues, which is enormous if you can imagine how that is in the middle of COVID. Another big one is the omnibus healthcare bill, which deals with chronic pain, Senator Reagan's bill, which balances out what we've tried to do on opioids, but makes sure people have access to pain, pain medicine, and pain therapy. We were able to do a bill that, when you talk about lowering the cost of healthcare, I think all of us have seen with shock the prices of prescription drugs. We have set the lowest cap on insulin and epinephrine, you know, EpiPens, which are used for an allergic reaction. Those are now capped in statute. And so, those costs, which were skyrocketing, if you're a diabetic, this is like your life blood. If you have a peanut allergy, EpiPens are your lifeblood. And we all saw in the press with those who are going through the roof, they are now under control in the state of New Hampshire. And it's a cap, so they can't charge beyond that. And that cap is the lowest in the country, which is pretty remarkable. It also allows reimportation of prescription drugs from Canada. It also created, and I was sponsor of this bill and co-sponsor of all the other bills, to bring together this omnibus prescription bill, prescription drug package. It will drop the price because, for two other reasons. One is we created a drug cost affordability board that will be monitoring this for the state, so the state will save money through that. The other way the state will save money is what's called reverse auction. And that means that they can actually put out essentially an RFP for medications. And that alone has been predicted to save the state millions of dollars, as well as the people who have to buy these drugs or pay for them. From DOT issues, you have two in the tenure plan. You have Ross Corner, which is supposed to go to construction in 2022, and the new tenure plan did pass, and Pond Street, the bridge, that is slated for construction in 2028. That's a red-listed bridge, as I'm sure you know. The constituent work I've done all across the district, all 11 towns, I've worked with individuals who've lost their jobs and needed unemployment, and I've connected them by calling the Commissioner directly, Commissioner Kapatis, and he's been great to work with. And we have not had anyone who has called, who needed benefits, who is entitled to benefits, who hasn't been able to access their full benefits, including a woman from Hampton Falls who used up her entire savings, she didn't think was right, to tap into her unemployment insurance. So, she is getting her retroactive benefits and going to at least partially be able to get back her savings. And then, on the small business side, we've done a huge amount of work, especially in places like where there are a high concentration of restaurants, to make sure they had access to the governor's Gopher grants. That includes, well, there's the federal PPP, and then there was the Main Street Fund and the Gap Fund. And those were confusing for many employers and many small businesses. We were able to get them connected with the agencies, make sure they got the funding they needed. In terms of the work I'm continuing to do, I sit on about 21 or 22 commissions and committees. As you know, I'm Chair of Senate Health and Human Services. I'm Vice Chair of Municipal Law, Election Law and Municipal Affairs. The Secretary of State, Bill Gardner, asked me to serve on the Select Committee on the Elections. I don't know, is Newton using the partial processing, the early partial processing option?
I don't think so.
You're not?
I don't think so.
So, larger towns are able to partial process. That's my amendment that I worked on out of this committee. So, this amendment created 2020-only statutory changes to meet the recommendations of the committee. The committee was three women, three men, three Republicans, three Democrats. We were able to come out with completely unanimous recommendations. Virtually all of them have been adopted by the Secretary of State for this election only, which, as you know, is a bit of a challenge. But one of the parts that I was very involved in was making sure that your poll, polling places had all the PPE you needed and the appropriate PPE for this, because the recognition was that the poll workers are the ones who have to sit there and get exposed all day. I also am on, another huge victory was contamination. I know Newton has some PFAS contamination issues. We were able to set the standard as about the lowest in the nation, so what's called an MCL, which is a maximum contaminant level. Ours are the most protective in the country, but rather than saying, which is a habit in Concord, rather than saying, "By the way, we're going to set these that low, and you're on your own, towns and municipalities and public drinking water systems," we put a $50 million backstop on that, so you actually do have funds to tap into. And the Attorney General has filed suit against the manufacturers, who knew that these chemicals never degrade, and that they are permanent chemicals, and that they have a cancer risk as early as the early 1960s. So, it's the same model as the tobacco settlements, where the manufacturers continued to profit even though they knew they were toxic. So, the Attorney General, under the governor's guidance, they have gone ahead and filed that litigation, which gets back to what I've always said, which is that the public property taxpayers should not be paying for cleanup when the people who actually caused the problem knew that it was toxic and it was permanent in the first place. So, those are some of the issues that I've been working with. We continue to work, one of the most interesting and, I think, hopefully impactful jobs that I have right now is, I am on the committee, which is called the Crisis Standards of Care Committee. I was appointed by the Governor's Commissioner of Health and Human Services, that's Loy Chivannet, and we're actually looking at how will the state deliver vaccination across the state? How will we triage? Because we are not going to get enough initially for everybody. So, how do we make a decision of who should get these? Who should be the first people? Is it first responders? Is it nursing homes, where we've seen 80% of the cases and most of the deaths? How do we do that? And that's, so I serve on that committee, and it's incredibly fascinating work. And the other people on that committee are among the top experts in the state, and it's great to be working with them. So, I'm happy to take any questions you might have on any of that. Or, one other thing I'd like, you know, if I get reelected, what I want to be able to do is take the interests of Newton. You will notice that the solid waste issues that happened in my first year, they've kind of gone away, so that's good news for Newton. It was a mistake to be asking you to account for all that solid waste. So, working with Municipal Association, as Vice Chair of Municipal Affairs, we were able to get that no longer a threat.
Any questions from the board for the Senator? No? How about in the gathered audience?
It's not any of us.
If it's two people, I think it's technically an audience, so.
That's right.
But we have plenty of people at home, I'm sure, watching.
And anybody who wants to reach out, my email is, if you go to the State Senate website, you can go to the Senate roster, and all the way at the bottom, number 24, please send me an email. I get that on my phone. And my legislative aide is Aaron Jones. He's awesome, and he will, will get back to you. So, anybody who is listening, who has a question, happy to answer that. And also, anybody who has a constituent issue they need help with, we're happy to do that. No problem is too small. Been pretty interesting issues that I've been called about, especially during COVID.
Yeah, I don't think any of us who were on a ballot ever thought we'd be dealing with a pandemic when we, when we got elected, but I think we're fine in our way. Larry, were you going to say something? You made the mask move, so, okay.
Things are hot.
Well, I was just going to say that I can speak from personal experience that Senator Sherman is very responsive and good with his follow-through and follow-up.
Thank you.
Just, I have to throw that out there.
And, and, you know, this is, I love doing this. This is sort of an extension of being, I found as a physician, in 30 years of practice, the biggest joy for me is not doing a colonoscopy. The biggest joy for me is the interaction with patients, and really being able to listen, understand the problem, and try to solve it with them. And that's what I do with constituents. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. But again, please reach out. If anybody on the, on the other end of the microphone needs help, I'm here.
Great. Thank you for coming down tonight.
You bet.
And Diane, just out of curiosity, no red light anymore, is that?
Look, there's a red light.
Okay.
Now.
A minute ago, there was no red light.
Never mind a minute ago.
Just heard you, I think.
Okay, all right. But we were, were we broadcasting, though?
No.
Huh? No, you were recording. He was recording. I think he just forgot to push the button.
Okay, all right. Good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
We're going to move on with our agenda here, and C is one I hope won't take that long, but we have our, our fire station contractor, who's been busy at work over there, and I think he's got a quick question and quick approval he needs from the board on his latest move with that sprinkler system.
Good evening, Board. Mike Povero, Construction Manager on the Newton Fire Station. The last time we talked about it, it was on a Zoom call, and it was agreed upon that we'd just give like the highlight points that we were hitting on that project. And we're hitting one right now. We've done all the underground testing, piping, hooking up of all the tanks. All the deep earth work is completed as of last Friday, testing, it's all approved and tested out. Now, we're getting ready for the foundation. And in the foundation work, we're going to be plumbing the new fire station pump house to the existing fire station. And in order to do that, the piping that's coming in from the pump house will interfere with the pumps that are there in that room now. So, I talked to the fire chief today, and he informed me that the Board of Selectmen are the local authority that has taken jurisdiction on the fire station. So, I need approval to be able to take the existing fire sprinkler system offline.
But how long will it be offline?
It's going to be a while, because we've got to interface the new piping that is coming out of that pump station into the firehouse. Now, we're going to wait till the absolute last minute in order to do that, but I need approval now so that when we get to that point, we can just move forward and keep the process going.
So, are we talking days, weeks, months?
Can't tell you. Not even going to take a stab at trying to tell you. I've got earthwork out there that, through piping and testing and having to do stuff that I didn't even anticipate doing, probably took a good four to five weeks longer than I thought it would.
And you're just talking about the sprinkler system, right? Any fire alarm systems would still be?
All the fire alarms will be intact. All your pole stations will be intact. It's just the sprinkler system itself.
And I would say, I'm no expert, but that's the only way you can do it, basically.
There's no other way to do it. I mean, you can, we can delay this and talk about it in eight to 10 Selectmen's meetings, but we're going to end up right back here at this crossroads of making the decision.
Anybody want to, so, the fire chief is asking us as the local authority on this to basically put it in writing, essentially in the minutes?
Yeah, I think just put it in the minutes. I don't think we need any.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, since there's no alternative, in order to tie in, you must shut off. If you don't, we're going to have water everywhere, correct? Is that kind of the problem there?
It's not even a water issue. I mean, we've got backflow preventers. It's not a water issue. It's actually cutting the piping and pumps out of the way that are in there now in order to take the new underground stuff in and tie it to the riser system.
And as soon as you cut, those sprinkler systems are no longer functional anyways, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to authorize shutting off the sprinkler systems at the point of doing the work necessary.
Sorry, do we need a waiver from the marshal or wait?
It's a local authority. I mean, you can go to the fire marshal, let me know when you get an answer. I'll be waiting.
So, we are the local authority.
Yeah, we're the local authorities, so.
Okay, then I'm in favor.
Cool. Second? Well, Kate, you want to be the second?
Second.
All right. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like you get five ayes. So, we thank you for the update and your efforts, and when you're ready, you have our sign-off on that.
Perfect. I'll keep you updated as it progresses.
Awesome.
Hopefully, foundation in the next couple days.
Right, before you leave.
Diane's waving you back.
Almost, you almost made it.
You just got to move faster.
I thank you.
Could we go down to the inspection report for the Gale Library? Have you, did you read, have you had access to your email to read the inspection report of the fire escape?
I have access to my email. Have I written, read that report? No.
Okay, then, well, there's no sense talking about it until you read the report and let us know what you think.
Well, is there an item that you want specifically to ask me about?
Reader's Digest.
It needs to be fixed, replaced, basically.
What has to be?
It's a concrete thing?
The concrete, the column that holds it up.
The fire escape.
Fire escape.
Oh, the fire escape column?
Yeah.
And we were told that you did the work the last time, that we should check with you about getting that work done.
I did. It wasn't a column, it was the base pad that the thing sat on, and that's a slab. I know that didn't deteriorate. This must be something else.
Yeah, the metal column.
There's a report with pictures, so you can see.
All right, so, if you could.
So, do I need to look at it? Was that the question?
Yeah, when you have a chance, look at it.
Oh, boy.
Well, I think we want to know if you can do the work. We know you're busy, and right now, I guess the second floor of the library is not usable because of not having the fire escape, correct, Larry?
That's correct.
Is that an issue, is that an issue right now because of COVID?
Aren't they doing sidewalk service and?
I, yeah.
Yes, they are.
They are still, okay.
Yeah.
So, logistically, it's not a?
Not tomorrow type thing.
Right, okay. I'll get, I'll get out there, I'll take a look at it.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Hold on, let's look at this list a little bit more. There might be something.
Walk there.
Going, going, going.
All right, that's it. There's no going back now. All right, so, we're going to move on down to D, which is the EOC update on COVID-19. So, this is always one of our most popular agenda items. So, Trish, thank you.
Are we supposed to be wiping these mics off or anything? I'm going to stand back.
Is it wipeable?
People can hear me?
There's no wipes.
Don't be able to hear you.
No wipes.
We'll put it on the list.
Put it on the list. I thought I gave Tony some, so they should be here somewhere. Okay. Hopefully, they can hear me, because I don't really want to touch anything.
You can take this down if you want.
Do you want me to go and get the wipes downstairs, Trish?
No, that's all right.
You sure?
I can take this down?
Yeah. Get some feet of it.
Okay. All right. On a positive note, the National Survey released this week ranked New Hampshire Public Schools in the top five safest in the terms of reopening. That was great news, and this was on a couple of our calls. The governor also issued an emergency order number 70, which extends emergency order 52, and that was basic guidelines for businesses and activities. And there's a whole list of them there if you need to see it. It's on the EOC website. Our numbers, which we always want information on, and again, now I don't tell you, you know, what the difference is since the last time we talked, since we're talking less and less. Okay. New Hampshire persons with COVID-19, 8,680. Recovered New Hampshire from COVID, 7,746.
Nice.
Deaths attributed to COVID, 444. Current COVID cases, 342. That can't be right. Current COVID case, oh, yeah, it is, sorry, 342. Persons who have been hospitalized with COVID are 738, but current hospitalizations are 15. New Hampshire is waiting for the arrival of our rapid test kits. Our warehouse is expanding and moving once again. We actually received more PPEs on yesterday. Larry and I, between the two of us, were able to get that. Governor's emergency order extends the Safer at Home and Business Guidance documents, and there has been some confusion about that. They've tried to explain it if you go onto the governor's website. This week, Homeland Security, along with the National Guard and Civil Air Patrol, will start distributing cloth masks to schools throughout the state. start distributing cloth masks to schools throughout the state. It has been determined that that should happen. Cloth not disposable. Local topics include reports about New Hampshire case numbers and trends. Also, the starting of a new vaccine. You've probably already heard about that. That's going to happen next month. There was talk about a Portsmouth church to host a wedding for a family of the pastor connected to the Maine super spreader wedding. That has been a big deal, and they're concerned that this Portsmouth church is actually going to now bring people down to Portsmouth. Also, a new report that two-thirds of New Hampshire hotels are now at risk of shutting down. National and regional topics include early data shows promising results from the Regeneron's antibody cocktail for the coronavirus. National news also is dominated clearly by President Trump's return to the White House and reactions to his actions. I'll leave it at that. Other national topics include updated CDC guidance on the indoor spread of COVID-19. On the local level, the Halloween guidelines I sent to you, I know you've got that on your agenda, you're going to discuss that later. That was a result of a webinar for the whole state on September 30th. Again, outlines, and we heard a little of it from Senator Sherman, the Gopher Grants. What he said was, we received $117,499. That's what we were approved for, but we had to submit the grants, and then it gets subtracted from that amount. So we actually, our first one was $29,926.46. We got that money. Number two was $28,156.13. We got that money. Our third gopher, we submitted on September 11th. It's still under review, but we submitted $25,244.60. And then gopher four, which we're in right now, is our last one. It's due October 30th. And I've reminded everybody, and so has Larry, that we need all invoices by October 15th in order to put it in. And that gives us about $30,000 if you add all these grants up, what we hopefully can get. Doesn't mean we're going to put in for 30 if we don't have the receipts. So far, they've actually reimbursed us for PPEs, COVID supplies, payroll for EOC, extra shifts for first responders at the health, at the health department, at the fire department. They've actually included, we had to argue about getting compensated for our health agent, and also, they now have approved paying for Tony because it's abnormal circumstances. So all of these gopher grants only add up to 25% of what we spent. That was approved. So we now are working on the FEMA grant, which is going to be the balance, the 75%. We got the stipend for first responders, $43,914. We actually did a grant for an EOC portable radio, $5,000. Our cost that we had to pay for that $5,000 grant was $32. We recently, as all of you know, we were working on the emergency operating plan. It was completed for a total of $8,000. And if you remember, we solicited you for review because it was a soft match. And thank you for those of you that reviewed it. And as a result, out of that $8,000, we only have to pay, we've rounded it off to 200, but I think it actually was $167, but somewhere around there. And that was the soft match. So for all of you in TV land and here at the table, thank you for doing that. Also, a hazardous mitigation grant for $4,000. We're still working on it, almost done. And Larry actually has gotten, I shouldn't call Larry, our EMD has gotten PPE donations from the state, free to the town for up to $25,000 so far, no charge to the town. So really, we're kind of tooting our own horn here. So far, we've got $165,241.19 that has been received by our town and cost us $232. So not too bad.
Nice.
Pretty classy. In addition to that, we did an election grant that Lisa brought our attention to. And with the help of Kim and Mary Jo, we got $2,502.55. And then today, we got another request from Bob Dismelik, our moderator. He sent us an email for another grant. We submitted it today. It's for elections. And I'm going to burn Matt here. We put him as the signer. And this Matt, this, this Matt, this grant is for, this is kind of cool if we can pull this off. It will cover in this election ballot drop boxes, drive-through voting, if we can pull it off, polling place rental and cleaning service expenses for our voting day, temporary staffing, vote by mail absentee voting, equipment or supplies we might need, and election administration equipment. So I'm telling you this because I've got the response, they received our application. They said that they're going, we're going to hear from them within two weeks, and we'll have to act timely. So my thought was, you might want to approve Matt as the signer when it comes in so that we don't have to wait for a meeting because we'll have to ask quickly, act quickly. And it's called the CTCL COVID-19 Response Grant Application.
Anybody want to make a motion while we're?
I move to have the chairman sign the
CTCL
Rolls right off the tongue.
COVID-19 Grant Application.
Yes.
Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. So, yeah, thank you, Trish and Larry, for all your efforts where, where, I know, Larry's the man behind the scenes. So what I wanted to do was, while we're on this subject, everybody has on their computer has the guidelines for meetings at Town Hall, which was done with Trish's help and Larry's help from the meetings, right?
Diane.
And Diane. So I guess what we need to do is make this official. So anybody want to make a motion to make these the official guidelines?
Make a motion to accept the guidelines for in-house meetings for all boards that want to participate.
Okay. Any discussion? Just so the people at home know, nothing very, nothing bizarre on this. I think we're taking this straight off the CDC guidelines. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if I could really screw Diane's minutes up, can we go ahead and approve F, which is election officials want to have a meeting in Town Hall on October 17th? I believe that's to get
I don't think we need a motion for that. Just general consensus of the board?
Yeah.
So
Whatever we want to call it. As long as they're maintaining the guidelines we just approved, I don't think anybody here has any
Yeah, because anyone can meet in Town Hall even now because we did say meetings are allowed in Town Hall. So as long as they follow the guidelines, there's no reason why they can't. Right?
I think so.
You have to book for that day, right?
Which one? Are you still on November 2nd?
October 17.
Yeah, October 17.
October 17?
This is for
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong thing.
Yeah, I skipped down.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking the election officials meeting in Town Hall
Yes.
on the 17th.
Okay, nothing scheduled they have. They can have it then?
Yep. Everybody good?
There's nothing scheduled. They can have it.
Go back to the old scheduling system. They call you.
Right.
Yeah, and now we have the guidelines, so. All right, so keeping with the COVID theme, and this is, we also have on our files here.
I just want to see if Trish or Diane, if we could order maybe plastic bags for the mic in a box of like 50. As each person comes up, the person talking takes it with them.
Good idea.
And then the next person puts one on. I'm sure they have something that can cover that. Because if this is going into next year, we're going to have the budget hearing meetings, we're going to have public meetings, whatever.
Yeah.
Right.
Cool. Hopefully, I think those will probably be cheap, but so on the COVID
Tomorrow, whatever.
Maybe Fogger will do it though.
A what?
If we got that Fogger.
Well, I sent it
But he's talking in between each speaker, we might not be able to
In between each speaker.
Yeah.
Fogger won't do no good.
Okay.
Okay, so COVID-19 and trick or treat. We, previous meeting, we did, I think, decided by Rec had mentioned the trunk or treat just won't work for our town this year. So that's not being held. You'd need basically the Gillette Stadium parking lot to be able to spread out properly. So the kind folks at EMD have provided us with guidelines for trick or treat.
We said cancel it, right?
It's like, that's like canceling Santa Claus. So it sounds like, why don't I just read these really quick and then we can have a motion? So in an effort to maintain trick or treat in the safest way possible during the pandemic, the town of Newton is offering the following safety guidelines. One, if residents do not want to participate in Halloween, leave exterior lights off. Two, put candy on an outside table. Three, only give out pre-wrapped candy, nothing homemade. I think that means you can still give out toothpaste if you're one of those people that, remember, you used to only get toothpaste from some people. Four, keep six-foot distancing or stand behind a storm door, then replace candy outside after each visitor is gone. Five, avoid large groups. Six, carry hand sanitizers. Gloves are not recommended. Do not hand, there's a typo there. Do not hand treats directly to children. Eight, wear protective masks, which could be part of the costume if it's cloth. Nine, don't wear a disposable mask under a costume mask. So anybody want to make a motion to adopt those guidelines for this year?
Second.
So Charlie's got that one, and Larry's the second. So I'm just happy there's something, we don't have to cancel this year.
Now, do we have
Time?
Date and times?
Oh, yes. Well, let's adopt these and then, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the date and time, I'm thinking October 31st is a Saturday, correct?
Yep. Well, we always do it on the 31st anyways.
Right. And it's a Saturday, which is great.
Which is even better.
What time do we want to do?
The 5 to 7?
I would say 5 to 7. That way, it's still light enough.
Mm-hmm.
It's always two hours, right?
I think we do 5 to 8.
5 to 8? I'm good with 5 to 8.
We used to do 5 to 8, but I think the state was saying 5 to 7 in Manchester and different places.
And one thing that during this webinar, they said, the state said, is that if possible, and of course, it's too late now, I didn't think to make those phone calls, try to do it the same times as other towns.
Yeah.
Because what they were saying, let's say it's 5 to 8, and everyone else is 5 to 7, the last hour, we're going to get out of towners. So they said, try to keep it similar to what other neighborhood towns are doing.
So if you don't mind, give me a second because I took down Plastow.
Because by the time people get home from work, they're going to need that extra hour.
This is a Saturday.
Oh, okay.
5 to 7 in Plastow.
Yeah, see, I like 5 to 7 because what will happen is at 7 o'clock, Plastow will come over the border.
I'll compromise, 5 to 7:30.
No.
Allie seconds, I compromise.
Then you can
I love it, we have
go to out of town people.
I love that we have a controversial vote on
Half hour.
time of trick or treat.
But I think, I think you're going to have other subdivisions in town that are probably going to go later, but it's mostly for their people that live on that street.
Just to warn you, side note, my phone's about to die. So if somebody, if somebody can take Kate on their phone, that might help.
Or do you have a charger?
I don't have a charger with me.
So I like the idea of just the two hours. I have a feeling that the number of trick or treaters is actually going to go down this year
I think so.
because of the COVID-19. Yeah.
What did Katie say?
Kate, what do you think?
7, 7:30.
Well, wait, even if we make it, they want us to do it like all the other towns? But maybe stop a development from doing it, can we? Can't they do it, they need to?
We're talking about officially allowing trick or treating within the boundaries of the town. We're not talking about what individual neighborhoods are doing with their neighbors.
Okay. I think we should be in alignment with all the towns around us as advised. That's just me. But I don't feel that strongly. That would be my opinion.
Do you want to just make the motion?
Yes, so I move to officially
We're going on his motion for 7:30.
Oh, did you have a motion?
Is there a motion on the table?
7:30.
Okay, sorry.
I seconded it, yeah.
So you seconded his motion for
7:30.
5 to 7:30?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Lisa?
No, I'm opposed. I want 5 to 7.
Okay. All right. So 5 to 7:30 will be different, but people might be done by then anyway. So, all right, so that is that one. Anything else on trick or treat? No? Okay, so
Who do I call if you die out? Because I need to speak for the cable thing.
Anybody have a phone line to?
Tell it to hang up, I'll get it.
Okay, hang up, Kate. Diane's going to call you.
Got you.
Thanks.
Hello.
All right, so we'll get her back online. And we're, we're talking about G, which is the Old Smokey the Bear sign in front of the old fire station, right?
Yeah.
And I believe former Chief Ingles has a, has somebody who's interested in
He would like to don't, give it to Ralph Easterbrook as a momentum, I guess.
No, I seem to recall a discussion that that sign couldn't be moved because of its condition.
Right. So I think it's going to, he's going to get what he gets, probably just
I think it couldn't get moved and replanted.
Yeah.
That's what it was, I think. But if you just cut it off and he takes it.
I'll make a motion if we give the Old Smokey the Bear sign to Ralph Esterbrook.
Second.
And this would be at no cost to the town?
No, they would have to take it down, right?
Yeah, no cost and no liability. If he's.
Well, that's, that's the thing, Lisa, is I believe when we did the auctions, we had some sort of a sign off for that, right?
I mean, if he's cutting this down on town property, it is town property, you know, whoever cuts it down.
Right now, it is.
Yeah, exactly. And so whoever cuts it off to take it away, if they injure themselves, I don't want the town liable.
Well, is Bill Ingles, he's a, still a town employee because he's the warden?
He's not a town employee, he's a state employee.
State employee.
The Esterbrook family built that fire station many, many years ago.
I'm not saying they can't have it.
The town, why they make it a clean deal to turn around and let them take the thing down?
Yeah, because I think the new owners is just going to came down and probably ruin it.
I have no problem with them having it.
So we'll just make them sign a waiver. You can take it down. If you get hurt, you're on your own.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and that's all I'm saying is let's just make sure the town is protected.
Do you want to add that to your motion with appropriate waivers, Charlie?
No, I don't.
Okay. So why don't we vote on this motion?
The motion to give them the sign, right?
Right, exactly.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Um, I, I'm with the stipulation that there is no liability to the town.
So you're a nay?
Yes.
Okay. Kate?
Well, I was a nay.
Aye, okay, she's a nay.
Right, so, so can you read back the motion, Diane? Just voting on this motion, Kate, here we go.
Selectman Melvin.
Okay, so we have four ayes then, okay? So I, I would like to ask Lisa to make a motion. Okay, you're not getting me. So I'll make the motion. Let's require, if anybody does any work over there, as we do so with any work done on town property, we have the appropriate waivers of liability or hold harmless clause. Anybody want to second that?
I will second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's four to one, okay. All righty, moving on from that one. H is review department needs. This is the cable, or one of them is the cable equipment for broadcasting Zoom conference meetings. Anybody want to speak to this? So just in a nutshell, we wanted to get some numbers against if we somehow could plug in to Zoom. So people, if they couldn't participate in the room, they could participate online. We could share documents. And I think it's worth the time and investment because even if the pandemic only lasts a few more months, we're still, we're embracing the future. I think we have one quote, but Kate, did you, excuse me, Kate, did you want to say something?
That also allows, what's good about it is it allows more participation from the town, which is really important for us. I had gotten the Exeter, there's an IT expert talking to Jamie because they found a workaround. This is an effort to, because you can't really find anyone else to do a bid to see if there is a fix. Jamie, where, I don't, I don't know if we should postpone the bid or wait. So he says they have to spend about 300 to buy all the hardware used to bypass the system, plus the added TV broadcast equipment, TV. I'm still finding more in the manuals. I'm still trying to find, find out more in the manuals, but they don't reference it. So, because I'm trying to get an assessment because the Exeter had a special way they did it, a workaround, and Robert, the director of Exeter TV who arranged a workaround, his equipment, I don't know if it's exactly like ours, was nice enough to speak to Jamie. Jamie spoke to him, and he's still trying to find out if the workaround is possible. He's concerned our cable does this, and their TV would work.
Can we bring Jamie out?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Keep going, Kate.
Matt can hear you.
Yeah, so.
I can hear you. I'm going to translate in a second.
I'm completely in favor of getting it to work, however.
Yeah, because she keeps mentioning him.
For the amount of savings potentially possible.
Thank you.
We don't know yet. Like, I'd like to see.
I was wondering if that would happen.
You know, do we spend $500 and then maybe it'll work? That's a huge savings.
So I'm, there was a lot there. I'm just going to translate because Kate's on the phone, and this is one of the reasons we want this upgrade, is so we can hear better. But she threw Jamie. Jamie's here now, Kate. So basically, what it is, is I believe we have one quote right now, right? We have one official quote. We've had it for a couple of weeks. I think we've all been able to see that, correct? And I think what Kate did is Kate reached out to somebody else and reached out to Jamie, right, to get some information about another company that could do the work and. Go ahead, Kate.
It was a hack, a workaround that was provided, the information was provided free of charge.
Okay.
A do-it-yourself workaround with no other words, other than that's what that is.
So if somebody couldn't, if somebody couldn't hear that, Kate was talking about a hack, so it's a workaround, which would be significantly lower. So Jamie, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we got the quote from the company who had installed all of the equipment in here, and they still have the blueprint, the blueprint for the machine build and the wiring and how it went in there. And they, and Diane and I had a call with, with them, a couple of calls to make, to see how we could get the sound to work, because the sound's the issue. Getting, getting people to be heard and getting people to hear without having any of the feedback. So they, they had recommended a system that uses an AV bridge, which is something that would eliminate some feedback. And it would, it would be a permanent installation. It doesn't have to be Zoom. It could just be any type of other, other broadcast. And Ms. Michaels had brought me in touch with Robert from Exeter PTV, and he had done a solution that some of the gamers use, and they can broadcast their own feeds to some other things with some physical hardware. And those are purchasable by Amazon. And there's no guarantee that it would work. Whereas the quote that we got, they would do the installation. They would also be part of the warranty of probably of the system that we have, and the compatibility is assured. So that's, those, those are where we're at. Robert has been very, very nice. I spent hours on the phone with him, and I appreciate all of his help. He would even come over here and take a look and see what we can do. But it's, it's not something that is a guarantee that would work. It was just a, a chance, a chance to try and save some funds, which is appreciated.
So just at a very high level.
Yep.
Somebody, probably Diane's going to have to correct me if I say anything wrong here. Our funding for the cable and all that stuff comes from essentially Comcast, right?
Yes.
Writes us checks. As part of their licensing, they have to give communities this, this, the broadcast fee. We get licensing. And what's our total in the, it's called the Cable Revolving Fund, right?
Right, right.
It was over $200,000.
So we have $200,000 in the Cable Revolving Fund. So essentially, any of this work would be, we'd be able to take out of that fund, correct?
Correct, yes.
So we wouldn't be asking the taxpayers to fund what we're talking about. So based on that, does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, actually, I had a question first.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
This hack, it, it sounded like it was going to be like one for each individual stream? I, I'm not sure how that would work for audience participation.
Yeah, so it would run a regular Zoom meeting. And it's just a way for the Zoom meeting to talk to the back work, workings of the computer in the back that would also allow, there's like a digital bridge that would allow for the Zoom to happen in here and for the cable to catch it. There's some magic sauce that goes in there for people much younger than myself to understand.
But I thought one of our problems was that we couldn't be on that Zoom meeting on our laptops and have another one that the other people were on, because we'd have the feedback here to here to here.
Right, there, there's no guarantee that this, this solution would eliminate any of the feedback issues.
But they didn't eliminate the feedback for their meeting or?
I, I, they have a different microphone set up. They don't, they're not necessarily wireless. They, they can have, we, I mean, we have a, a feedback destroyer in the back, but it, it's not going to be real time. You always will get something. Zoom does have something built into itself that shuts off the feed, but we've heard it, we've all been on Zoom meetings, that everything feeds back for some reason. So it's not, it's not even a guarantee that Zoom won't feed back on itself, so.
How much is that hack? So how much does it cost to try the hack? And then if it doesn't work, we get the really expensive thing. How much does that cost?
They priced, they priced it out for the Exeter system. It was about $300 from Amazon. You would still need to purchase a, a separate TV if the hack works, because you'd, you'd still be, you'd have like the Jetsons, you'd have your own TV here and everyone would be on that. It wouldn't be on the broadcast. It wouldn't be on the, the big, the big screen in the room. So they, they did a truly great workaround in terms of figuring out something creative. But for any, any types of systems that are live streaming, it's not, it's not going away. Zoom's not going away. And I think this would build into the system. And there's also a capability that we could check into, that you could even live Facebook Live, Facebook Live and, and other things that if the software works, it would work with that system as opposed to a hack. So there's.
Okay, so we're going to get a much more professional, portable visual product if we go.
A lot of that, a lot of that quote was labor and their brain power, which, I mean, we're, we're very, very part-time.
Yeah.
Plus you're going to get tech support. You order something from Amazon.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they have a tech support here, so.
Yeah.
And if we were looking just to cover us during COVID, that'd be one thing, a temporary Band-Aid. I, I could see that. But I'm really looking for incorporating this into now and the future.
It would be an upgrade.
Making it the future wave of meetings. To always have the public be able to either be in person or on Zoom or whatever other video conferencing we may choose to use and allowing us to share documents through that process as well.
And Comcast would pay for it.
I can't see us doing that with the hack.
So just one thing with your, your Comcast revolving fund there. You guys did have a warrant article last year, too. I don't know if that, where the warrant article is going to dissolve the, the fee and put it into IT, is that, that pass?
It's all together, cable and IT.
Yep, it's all under one.
And we still get more every year, every quarter?
Well, that's it, yeah. It's, it, the revenue stream is still there.
And I think we need to take that revenue and invest it the way it was intended, which is in more of the cable technology.
Right.
You know?
And to.
This will benefit the whole town.
And to kind of continue to pile on is, you know, five years, 10 years down the road. If whatever the future holds, we'll be in a position to, to do that, where a hack is kind of like, you know. Anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion once I find the name of the company.
HB Communications.
Okay, so that company I make a motion to accept there.
Do you authorize?
To authorize the cable committee or cable department to purchase the equipment.
Uh, I think it has to, you have to authorize the chairman to sign the quote.
I can't hear you.
The board is selecting.
Authorizing the chair to sign the quote.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we, we should probably put the amount in there. Nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars, zero cents.
Exactly.
Okay, so that was Charlie's, I'm sorry, Larry's motion, Lisa's is second.
Yes.
Did you have in, in there to come from the cable fund, the revolving fund?
That is in the motion, yes. Yeah, I heard Larry say it.
Okay.
As, as, as part of the discussion, let's be clear on this. As part of our purchase policy, we have a stipulation in there, right? That says if we have a, a known entity that has expertise in the field, we don't have to go out to bid for it. So the board is identifying this company as a, an expert in this field. I don't think there's many that can do this.
And the supplier of the equipment, we already have.
Exactly.
I think Kate has one to say something.
What's that, Kate?
I would say I asked around, I sent a lot of emails to other select workpeople to find anybody else for bid. And no, I came up nothing.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. All right, so let's call for a vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Kate, are you an aye? All right, thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
It's fair, and more importantly, like Lisa said, we, this is for the town's benefit so that they can participate in COVID or no COVID, and that's really what our.
Right, all right. So the next agenda item is landscape bids. And I believe we have a, kind of a worksheet here, if I can find it.
Yes. There it is.
Just not seeing it yet.
So you got two bids, as you know, when you opened them the last meeting, or, yes, last meeting in September. The difference between the two bids is $6,190.
And the reason?
Uh, one is less than the other.
That was a good answer.
Thank you.
Meaning, is there anything that differentiates the services? Or, you know, was one more cuts than the other or one covering?
No, it's, it's apples to apples.
But for whatever reason, one company chooses to.
Right, apples to apples.
And we, I believe, if I'm right, the, the higher bid is the one we have contracted.
Correct.
When does this start? In April?
Yes.
And have we used the lower bidder before?
We actually use them for the cemeteries right now. That's why I think he came in lower, because he wants the whole town to.
When's the deadline to turn this in?
Typically, what, we want to get this in before the end of the year to make sure it's part of the default. So yes, it starts in April, but we don't want to wait till that point of the year to sign this. So in years past, we've tried to sign it in the fall just to get it locked in.
Right, so that way they can go into the budget, and you can budget for it.
Well, I, I'm sorry, but apples to apples, $6,000, I have to go with the lower one. Who's that company?
D and J Landscaping.
All right, I make a motion to sign the quote from D and J Landscaping for the landscaping in 2021.
Do you have the dollar amount total?
Yes, so this is a three-year contract that we were proposing?
With a, with an escape clause?
Um, I, no, I don't think we put an escape clause, but.
We can't sign it without an escape clause.
You said three years?
That's what we were looking for, a three-year contract, so we didn't have to keep doing this every year.
I still like to, looking to get in our own person to do this work.
Well, I sent all that information to you back last year, so you've had that time.
Well, because of COVID-19, we haven't been able to.
You haven't been able to do what?
Get the spreadsheet that Ms. Lisa wanted.
Well, I, it's, it's not just selectmen ganya. I think we need numbers in front of us if we're, if we can commit to a point, and again, like I just said, let's not wait until March 31st, but if we can commit to a day where we can have these numbers and we can do a, a true comparison.
I don't mind going one year, because it'll take us that long to get it up and all that.
But you've had over a year. This was brought, this was brought up back when Selectman Doggett was here, and you knew about it then. Yet you hadn't done it yet.
Right, but it got shot down when Selectman Doggett was here. It was two, two to three, two votes for three votes.
But again, you guys never sent any.
We never had any data.
Sent this to you guys.
Yeah, we didn't have any data or equipment or whatnot.
Well, that's, that's, I think what Diane is saying is somebody, somebody needs to provide the data. And I think the, the biggest thing for me is there's a value, I think we've talked about this before. The money is not the only measurement of value. And if you have one person working in town doing all this work, no matter who they are, they get sick, quit, or whatever, that's a single point of failure. So we need to truly have a comparison if we're going to do a comparison. The previous contract, was that a one-year contract that we had?
No, we had signed a two-year, two-year contract. We started with one year to see how he went, and then we extended it to, to the two years.
Yeah, so I think.
Ended up three years.
So what Larry's saying is you want to, you want to do a one-year contract to give us a year to come up with.
If they'll accept it.
Yeah, but as it is, I, I have to rescind my motion because there is no escape clause. We cannot enter into a multi-year contract unless we are able to walk away if it, budget doesn't pass. So I, I'm not ready to make that motion yet. We can't.
For the multi-year one?
For the three-year.
Yeah, we can't do a multi-year one without an escape clause.
So we can offer him a one year. It'll be April 2022.
I think if, if you've already got it in the budget, this is going to be lower than what we're already paying. So that money's already in the budget. So it doesn't mean that if the budget doesn't pass, because it's less than what we already budgeted for this year. So I think you're okay.
I do not agree.
Well, I think what Lisa's saying is there are other issues that escape clause protects against other than having zero money for.
Well, how about, even a one year, we postpone it till December, January.
The board cannot enter into a multi-year contract without town approval.
Right, right, that I understand.
So.
I'm talking about the one year or whatever.
The escape clause provides us that buffer because it's essentially an extension each year. We are able to walk away at the end of one year or another with that escape clause. That's allowed, that's what makes it not so much a multi-year contract that binds us for three years, as it is, you know, if we are unable to pay, we can walk away.
No, I get that.
All right, so I need that in the contract before I can agree to sign.
So we got a lot of different things going on here, so let's kind of see if we can pull all this together. So we have some people who want to seriously consider in-house landscaping. What can we commit to to get that data?
What's your project, Chuck?
Well, we're going to need more time because we have many other.
Okay, how much time?
I would say one year, only because of the fact we don't know when COVID is going to end. And I've been talking with the police chief about getting the surplus equipment for free. It'll do the job. He said you can get it, but when he's having a problem with his COVID-19 for the state to come down and do the inspections.
All right, so we need a year to get the business case together. So we know we can't do a multi-year deal without an escape clause. So what about, what about offering them a one-year deal? How do we feel about that?
I'm cool with that.
Not offering, you know what I mean, but asking for them to bid on a one-year.
No, we need to ask them to come back with a one-year contract.
Okay, so it, I don't think we need a motion for that, Diane. Do you, our apologies. Do you mind going back to both?
You mind, but I will do it.
No, I'm serious. I mean, I put it out as an RFP. I had you guys look at it.
Yeah.
And now you're coming back and saying, you know, let's start again, basically. So I will go back, do you want me to go back to both of them or just the one that? So I will go back, do you want me to go back to both of them, or just the one that has the lower bid?
I would, I would like both of them, I think.
We must have had an escape clause on the other company.
We must have, right. I mean, these are just bids, you're not, you know, you haven't gotten the contract yet from that person either. So maybe what you do is you accept the bid provided there is an escape clause.
That's a really good point, is, but I think we have a curveball here because we're at least two votes that are, they want a year to take a look at it in-house.
But, excuse me, just a quick question for me to understand. In-house isn't all that spreadsheet as an option, right?
Correct, and what we're saying is, we really need data. We can't, we don't want to just assume in-house is going to be cheaper unless we have numbers.
Yeah, I need to see that, because that's one person, right, doing it?
I would think so, I couldn't see us being able to afford multiple people to do it.
For in-house, okay.
Right. But.
But in this year, and the economy and COVID, this is a good time for the town to.
So if somebody, if somebody makes a motion right now to accept one of the bids for three years without, and I mean, it's going to be dependent on contract language. We're not, we're not accepting a contract, we're accepting the bid to get the contract. Then we'll look at the contract, so.
All right, so my motion is to accept the bid from the lower.
D and J.
D and J, provided there is an escape clause in the contract.
Okay.
So we need a second.
What did Kate say?
Second for discussion. So with that escape clause, we can get rid of them after one year?
We will look at that escape clause and see what it says.
There's got to be language around it.
There is language around the escape clause, just like there is in every, just like in the fire truck lease agreement.
Let me back up, just so we don't move backwards here. What we're voting on is not to accept the contract. We haven't seen a contract yet. We're, we're voting to accept the bid to get a contract. Once we get the contract, we can see what the escape clause says, then we can vote on the contract.
Because then it would be a vote to sign that contract, which is what then authorizes it.
So we still have to vote on the contract?
We do.
Yes, we do.
All right, so I'll vote on the price, that's not going to do anything.
All right, so you've seconded her motion, though? Your motion is?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Are we talking one year?
You motion for?
I motioned to accept the bid.
Which is a three-year bid.
Provided there is an escape clause. So it is a bid for three years, I'm looking for it to, now, that means we accept this particular bid over the other bid.
So if he comes back with the contract with the escape clause, then it's a done deal?
We can see if that escape clause gives us what the board wants it to give us.
We're going to review a contract no matter what, is what it comes down to.
And it does not become binding until the board votes to authorize the chair to sign.
Yep. Right now, we have two people who want to do business with us, and we're telling which one we want to go the next step.
The clause will still be in there for the year if we, if we so do decide.
All right, so we're voting on the next step, which is to actually get a contract. We don't have a contract right now.
And that bid's not considered a contract?
No, it's just a bid.
A proposal.
It's a clause.
Right, proposal, we don't have a contract yet.
Yeah, until we sign something, we don't have vote to sign the contract. All right, so there's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? All right, here we go, everybody hang on. All in favor?
Aye.
Kate's an aye, Lisa's an aye, I'm going to be an aye.
I'm going to be an no.
No.
No, okay, there we go. So let's get a contract, and then we'll cross that bridge when we get that. All right, moving on from landscaping to Larry, you had this, this, oop, sorry.
Yeah, under the COVID-19, the state offered us a grant for a portable radio, which is like the one that Charlie got, the yellow one there. It's a lot more different than what the fire department is getting. So the total cost, it's a $5,000 grant, it's going to cost us $32, because the price of the radio is $5,031 and some change.
Okay, and so you need a signature, is that the deal?
Correct. Well, we need, yeah, the board to vote on it, and then I will do the minutes. Is it one signature?
Depends on how you want to do it, there's.
We need a motion for the chair to sign the grant?
No, hang on one second, let me bring it up.
Oh yeah, there's this thing you've got to say.
Right.
On a grant.
Okay.
What are we getting, Larry?
A radio.
For the radio.
A radio or a bunch of radios?
A radio. One.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was wondering, one radio or a bunch of radios? Just one radio for $5,000? Wow.
It's a dual, it's a dual-band, VHF, UHF, digital, P25.
And then other radios work off that? Yeah.
Is this, I don't see it, is this on here, Diane?
Yes, I have it here. It's Selectman Gonya.
Yes.
Move to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented in the amount of $5,000 to purchase a radio for the town's Emergency Operations Center. Furthermore, the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $10,000, in which the town will be responsible for a 50% match of $5,000.
I make that motion.
Seconded by Charlie. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Kate, you're an aye?
So I think you need three signatures on that, okay?
Three, okay.
Three, yep.
Kate, you're an aye?
Kate's sleeping.
I didn't hear Paul have to say aye, so I'd have to just not vote.
Okay.
But you still, I just couldn't hear.
Okay, we'll catch up on that later. That was a long one to recap, so. When do we get that upgrade? Is it soon, hopefully?
It's what is, it's six weeks minimum, probably.
Six weeks, yeah, that's another good reason to have, have voted on that tonight, so. Okay.
So you're going to have, three of you are going to have, there's a bunch of papers in there to sign for this grant, just so you know.
Okay. Moving on down to Kate. November 3rd, general election, selectmen's schedule, so this is our coverage, is that?
Yeah, I'm thinking last time this way here, you can get it set ahead of time if you want to appoint people to, because you can't be there or whatever.
Do you have a work schedule yet, Larry?
I'm only get till four.
Here, well, not here, but in town till four? Okay, Charlie, you're an all-day, yeah, so.
I'm an all-day.
You're an all-day.
And so this time, we appoint our own replacement?
Yeah, apparently, as we've learned. What's that? Well, you're a candidate, you count, is what we were told, so.
Yeah, you count.
If you're on the property. Yeah, yeah, so the, kind of the idea is, the quorum number, you can count somebody with a sign. But as we've learned, if one of us has to leave, and I'll have to leave around five, we can appoint, and we probably just want to do it, we can appoint a pro temp selectman for the rest of the time, so.
Yeah, but she works for the, she works for the.
That's okay, that's okay.
She can still do it?
I want her as mine, though. Are we going to fight over, can we flip for her?
And you don't appoint them until you're leaving, or if you're not going to be there at all.
Yeah, but it's like the NFL draft, if you want your top pick, you want to get it in quick, so.
No, because they can't be appointed just in case. They're not your pro temp unless you cannot perform the duty.
Yeah.
Then you appoint the pro temp.
So I guess the good news is, we all know the rule now and how to do it. So the day of, we'll, we'll check it out, but, so that's our schedule, so I think, oh, sorry. Kate, what are your plans? Do you know yet?
We're looking to go afternoon if possible.
Afternoon, that'd be pretty good. If Larry's leaving at four to work, then we could have you come in shortly after lunch, and we would be in pretty good shape, so. All right, cool.
What is that?
Some vacuuming?
Yeah, and we just need three.
Yes, right. All right.
Go till five?
Five, yeah. November 2nd, proposed selectmen's meeting. So this is, because of the voting on November 3rd, we essentially eliminate a meeting in November. So do we want to think about on November 2nd, having a meeting? Yeah, night before.
That's fine for me.
Do we need that meeting?
Yes, you do, because it's budget season.
Yeah.
Then let's have that meeting.
The budgets aren't out yet, right?
Well, we, that's on your agenda tonight to go over the schedule, the submission schedule.
And there's also the crunch of everything else.
We don't want to be waiting till the last minute either. We need time to incorporate, get all the proposed budgets, pool them all together into one spreadsheet, and then review it, possibly call department heads back.
Right, but Kim hasn't sent them out yet, right?
No, because we're waiting for you guys to make sure that we have the submission schedule correct. So are you available November 2nd for a meeting?
Yes, I am.
I am.
There's no other time? Be there early the next morning to get out at 10:00 or 11:00, and your feet all day, actually? Would we do it like Wednesday?
Well, we have, we have people who love this stuff, Kate, they just love getting up early, right? Don't you?
Well, it's only eight o'clock.
Just kidding.
Are we still on November 2nd?
I think, yeah, I think, Kate, the thing is, November, so if you had it the next day, you'd still, you'd still have the crunch there of having stayed late some of us.
Is this a regular meeting or a budget?
Yes, it's a regular meeting.
It's worse the day after election than it is the day before.
Probably would be, yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
We'll just cap it, eight o'clock's the deadline, six to eight.
That'd be nice.
Well, it, I'm okay with it being a regular meeting, you know, six to eight, six to nine, whatever we need to do to keep things moving.
Depending on the schedule, whatever she puts on the schedule.
I can, it's on here, so let me tell you what you got for what, the 2nd, November 2nd?
Yeah, November 2nd.
We still got one more in October, though.
Yeah, that's it.
We're already in October, so there's only one October meeting.
Worried about the crunch.
If you're going to do November 2nd, you have the building.
Only one October meeting?
Because this is the first one in October.
Which today is the what, 6th?
Today's the 6th.
We're not meeting the 20th?
Yes, you are.
That's the only one left, so we only have one more October meeting for budgeting. And then if we only did one in November.
Then you'd be stuck doing a lot of things.
Then we'd be in December trying to do it all.
Yep.
You wouldn't have a budget.
Yes, so the proposed submission schedule for November 2nd would be the Building Department, Board of Appeals, Elections, Registrations, Vital Statistics, Library, and Tax Collector.
And that sounds like a doable list.
Yeah, and I mean, the reality is, that list might get shortened, you never know, so.
If some departments don't show choose.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm good.
So everybody's okay with November 2nd meeting?
I think so.
Okay, good.
We'll have a quorum here anyways, right?
Yep.
Okay, great, excellent.
So are you?
You talked about watching the time.
Yes.
Before we started, so just do that on the second.
Yeah, okay, understood. Like Larry, I don't know if you heard Larry, Larry was saying to cap it at eight if we can.
Yes.
But here's what we'll do, and Diane's usually pretty good when we tell her this. The other stuff that's on that agenda, let's lighten that load if we can, you know?
And we're going to get those budgets before the 2nd anyway, right?
Correct.
So if we review them and do our homework.
We should be able to get through them quickly.
By eight, eight-thirty, yeah, that's fine.
So is the board looking to have the department heads? If, I guess the state was talking about a lot of the budgets are lower because the money's not coming in. Are you looking to reduce the budgets a little bit this year, or what are you planning?
That's a loaded question. I basically, I said this last year, and I didn't get much support, but I really think budgets should be focused on what people actually spent this year. So if, what I really want to see is, I want to see what they actually spent in 2020. And if they're telling me that, oh, well, I always keep $5,000, $10,000 extra, just in case. That's what I had, I've had a problem with over these years, so. I'd like to see what the actual spending has been. And somebody said to me last year, they said, well, last year, they might not have spent. And then I asked for, I believe, the average over five years. I'd like to see that again, but that's just me, so. But I think we're looking to get a, correct me if I'm wrong, we want a budget that is a functional budget for the town without overextending the people in town.
An accurate representation of the needs of the department for 2021.
Versus what the public can stomach.
Well, that's what my concern is, with people being out of work or whatever. We don't want the budget to go too high, because they'll just shoot it down. But are you looking for like a spending freeze or anything coming up, or?
Well, I think we normally do that in November anyway, right?
I can't hear.
You can't hear me? That's, I think we normally do that in November, right? We put the freeze.
Spending freeze.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, 500?
Yeah, I mean, it's just something to think about, because before you know it, we're going to be toward the end of the year. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, and the typical reason is so that we don't have those last-minute purchases just to use up.
And it doesn't mean the board can't approve. The board would approve if there's expenditures that go above that.
Yeah, if they're necessary expenditures.
Right, right.
But if there are expenditures, just because there's money left over, that's a different story.
All right, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Sometimes, can't guarantee it through the. All right, so I think we're done with that one, right? We got the schedule at least as written tonight. Do we have an intent to cut for 36 Thornel Road? Anybody have that in front of them?
Got those new houses?
The one new house down near Forest Reynolds, the old house there.
Yeah, I moved to sign the intent to cut for 36 Thornel Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to sign the intent to cut for 19 Maple Ave.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have the manifest. Any other business before we go to manifests? No?
Those are a couple of things on here.
What's that?
I'm going to go back to it.
We have a ton of manifests, so. Lisa, did you want to start?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, so I would like to.
Can I stop you one second? We have somebody here that wants to speak to the.
Sure.
I don't know if it's too late.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the intent to cuts 39 Thornel, we knew about.
36, actually.
Scenic Road, I'm sorry, what?
36.
36, what did I say?
39.
Oh, okay.
Flipped upside down.
I'm thinking of 19 Maple, too, so I got my sixes and nines. So 36 Thornel, we knew about, Conservation talked about it, we were aware of that. They contacted us ahead of time. 19 Maple, I know you guys need to sign this, however, if there is something, and I don't know if Conservation can have a meeting and discuss a letter that should go to them. They did this intent to cut after they already cut, and it is a scenic road. We should, we should have something, and I don't know if in the statute. I know we need to sign it, because that's important for the town. But somehow, they should be put on notice. You don't do it and then do the application.
Yeah, it's no longer an intent, let's say.
And we have no teeth to go after them, but I think maybe, I don't know, a stern letter or something? And I don't know if it should come from Conservation or you guys.
Just so you know, they were cutting in the back of these properties. They only pulled one intent for one property, but cut the other.
Okay.
Because they're the same owner.
I see, okay.
But the state did get involved.
Okay.
And they've given them three warnings, the logger, three warnings already. And unfortunately, this is another intent to go with the one that they shouldn't have pulled in the first place.
Okay.
So I've been working hand in hand with Noah from the state.
I know you were, okay.
And he is, he's helping a lot, because we don't have anybody to go out and look at these properties.
No teeth, right.
Right, and this guy just kept, he kept knocking on my door, and then he ended up cutting a right-of-way, and I'm like, I don't know if you can be doing that or not.
Okay.
It's not easy, because we don't have anybody to.
Which is a little town, I just wanted to comment, okay.
Definitely, and the other thing is, with this situation as well, is remember, it's, it's, there are vendors, or there are contractors that do this cutting, so, they, you know, they should know better, and the owner, that might be the only time in their life they ever cut, but the contractors are who we can, can follow up on, and I think in this one, we made sure, because it was a Massachusetts contractor, who should have known better, but they kind of pled ignorance, because they're, they're coming up from Massachusetts, but there's the teeth, is the contractor. Do they want to do business ever again? Well, we get the state involved in the, so.
Good, thank you.
No, no problem.
Nancy, is this the one that I wouldn't sign?
No, that was a different one.
That was a different one, yeah.
That was on Thornel as well.
Nearby.
On Maple Ave.
Not on Maple. No, these are the ones I have, Charlie, I don't have any others.
No, he's talking about previous one, we didn't sign, remember, he didn't sign one of them.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't Maple Ave.
But that's what he's talking about, previous ones, from a couple of weeks ago, I think, from September or something, we had one.
That was on Thornel, not on Maple.
So this guy didn't pull, he didn't pull a permit either?
No.
I mean, unless you want to hire somebody to go out there and watch these people, and be able to, you know, put the police on them or whatever, but.
We have a tree warden.
Um, no, we don't.
We don't have a tree warden?
We do have a tree warden.
No, we do have a tree warden.
But he, he doesn't go out and check the trees.
We can't be paying a tree warden to be driving around town looking for people cutting down trees without an intent to cut.
Intent to cut is different than a dangerous tree, and so I'm working with the state now, and I'm trying to get these things fixed, but.
I think what it comes down to is, a lot of people, I think, were clear that they, they do the whole ask-for-forgiveness-later type approach, and, and so if that happens, we gotta get the state involved, and then.
And that's what I'm doing.
We can't put the trees back, but we can make sure we get the state involved, and they, you know, we're not gonna send the police necessarily every time one of these is going, and we don't necessarily know until we see the trucks out there, right?
And the problem is, is they start cutting, they don't stop, they just keep going, and so the state gets involved and comes down, they give them warnings, they can penalize them, they can do whatever they need to do, but we're a small town, we're not, they're not gonna run down from North Conway just to check out somebody that's cutting trees that might fall on the house. Those are legal, you can cut those.
All right, so, you guys want to move on to the manifest?
All right, so the first thing is, I want to, I want to announce that the board signed vendor manifest dated September 29, 2020, in the amount of $1,187,998.26, of which, $1,138,819 goes towards the October Sandborne Regional School District payment.
We have school?
So Charlie seconded that one, any discussion?
Well, it wasn't a motion, it was just an announcement.
Oh, because we did that the last go, okay, sorry.
Right, I do, however.
He's still seconded it, though.
Must be his souly.
I do, however, move to sign the warranty deed for 35 South Main Street.
This is exciting, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, a lot of seconds, we'll give it to Larry, though. Any discussion? So for those following at home, that's the old fire station, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Yeah, right, right, it's an extension for, yeah, yeah.
I move to sign vendor manifest dated October 6, 2020, in the amount of $26,089.19.
Second. Right, give it to Kate.
Give it to Kate, she was pretty quick on the draw there, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And if you noticed, that didn't have a Sandborne payment, right?
It did not.
That was very low.
I move to sign Police Detail Revolving Fund Manifest dated October 6, 2020, in the amount of $17,832.47.
Second.
Seconded by Larry.
And for anyone who doesn't remember, that is money that comes in and then gets paid back out.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign Emergency Management Revolving Fund Manifest dated October 6, 2020, in the amount of $1,808.51.
Seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign Cable Vendor Manifest dated October 6, 2020, in the amount of $4,703.0 cents.
Get a second. Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign Inspection Fee Revolving Vendor Manifest dated October 6, 2020, in the amount of $10,158.70.
Second.
And just so people know, that's because inspections are still happening.
Nice. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I announce that the board signed payroll manifest for pay period September 13 through 26, 2020, with the pay date of October 1, 2020. No seconds need required.
It's an announcement.
It's an announcement, because it's already done.
But hold on to that second.
Yeah, and if anyone's asking, the board is allowed to contemporaneously sign documents during this. So, next motion, I move to sign requisition number 2491, in the amount of $2,030 to scrub and apply four to five coats of wax on 2,000 square feet of VCT tile at the fire station.
Anybody?
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
So, didn't this come up before, and it's up again?
Uh, no, what came up before, and I did get this clarification, by the way, because that was, I had the same question. What we actually did authorize was spending of up to $8,000 for fire and police for cleaning, not for coating wax, so they're going to scrub, essentially remove old wax, apply new wax, because the wax does deteriorate after so long, so we need some fresh coat of wax on that. So scrub it, apply wax.
Why don't we just hire a maintenance company to come in and do it?
That is the maintenance company that's coming in to do it.
But that's just one shot?
Yes. For the scrub and the wax.
Yeah, but we should be doing at least a three or four times a year.
We do the regular maintenance, and this is the above and beyond.
Yeah, so what we started first, with the $8,000 back in March, is when we did this, is we agreed that if we give it the regular maintenance, the buffing, et cetera, then that will extend the life of the wax.
Correct.
Okay?
And we get a strip and wax once a year.
Now, we have made it from March till now, and now we need to apply wax.
Okay, so we're gonna strip it and put three coats on it every year?
Well, we're gonna have to make that decision every year, yes.
All right, so yes, so I seconded that one.
But I also think that we should be do, I don't know why we didn't get a quote for both the fire station and the police department.
Police department said they were all set.
They're doing their own thing.
He did them, he did them.
Okay.
Really, what we need to see is, next budget, we need to have line items.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, next year's budget, we need to incorporate that all in.
Correct, this needs to be put.
Maintenance and cleaning with one strip waxing a year.
Exactly, and it would not be under the fire department budget or the police department budget.
No, it would be under the government buildings.
For all the buildings, so.
Yep, I agree.
We're catching up.
Do you get to call that vote, no?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We did get a, did we get a second? You got a second for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Kate?
Kate? Kate's an aye.
All right, I move to sign requisition number 2492, in the amount of $2,344.87 for, I'm assuming, one VHF radio for the fire department.
That's Charlie, got that one.
This is the one, the one that wanted to purchase one like this, because they got one. This is, this is the older one, 15 years old, and to buy parts and have it repaired, it's $2,200 bucks.
Yeah, and we've gone through this before with the other radios, as they've been replacing them, I have no problem with this.
Wanted me to make sure that I'm reporting, that this is what they would be getting, it's more advanced, but it's less money.
And it's on a state bid.
And it's on a state bid.
Yep.
So why are we looking at this?
Yeah, because it's under $3,500, right?
Yeah.
Yes, but according to the purchasing policy, they are required to submit a requisition for anything between $1,500 and $2,500.
Okay.
Okay.
And that is what they did, they submitted the requisition.
Sounds good to me.
So you called a vote, you seconded, right?
Yep, you're a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And I move to sign the appointment for Patricia Masterson to the Cable Committee for a two-year term to expire on April 30, 2022.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Kate, are you an aye?
Aye.
All right.
And that's all.
That's all, that was a long one.
It was.
So, we're gonna move on to announcements, any announcements? New?
Don't you guys have a yard sale coming up?
Yeah, this, I don't know the time, but the yard sales, the townwide yard sale, it's gonna be on the website, right, Diane?
Yeah.
For Saturday?
Isn't it 11 to 2, I think?
Sounds familiar, and we have all the guidelines out there and all that, I think they're still taking signups if people want to participate, and thanks Trish, I think Trish got like a huge supply of masks, so if they're participating, they get these kind of masks, so.
No, no, really, I gave her my mask away.
But it's only three hours?
I don't, don't, don't quote me on that.
The hours?
These guys are telling me.
It all depends on individual house, I guess.
Well, it's, you know.
Well, I'm saying, townwide yard sale, 11 to 2, that's only three hours.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, don't take my word.
I was just curious.
I think that's what the correct minutes said, so.
Google it.
So motion to adjourn? No?
No, no, we got approval of minutes.
I move to approve the Selectmen's Non-Public and Public Meeting Minutes dated September 15, 2020.
Which one did you say?
September.
The September 15th, public and non-public.
Oh, how many say it was the non-public, but the public, no.
So I'll second.
Are you, okay, so.
I'll second non-public.
Hold on.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, no, 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 I had a motion, so let me amend my motion to approve the Selectmen's Non-Public Meeting Minutes for September 15, 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Kate?
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 Might be on mute.
Aye.
This is an aye.
Now I am going to move to sign the Selectmen's Public Meeting Minutes dated September 15, 2020.
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Larry.
Are you looking for an amendment, Charlie? Are you looking for an amendment to the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Is there something we're missing?
I don't, I don't believe it's incorrect, that's all.
Then we need to decide whether or not something needs to be stricken from it, changed, or added, but we need to have public minutes for the public.
I don't believe it's incorrect, that's all.
Then correct it.
How so? How are they not correct?
It was, it was something that was said in the end, it wasn't in the minutes, it's that simple.
So correct it and add it.
No, I'm not going to do that.
We have to have minutes.
Then just take my note and move on.
Did you submit them back to Diane for fixing?
I'm not gonna let anybody change it.
All right, so I'm gonna call the vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And Kate, are you an aye?
Aye.
Okay, so one nay. All right, Lisa, do you want to continue?
All right, I am going to move to accept the Selectmen's Public Hearing Minutes dated September 15, 2020.
Just did those.
It's a public hearing.
No, this is the public hearing.
Remember, we had the public hearing on DOT.
Rose Corner Public Hearing.
You did that same night?
Separate minutes for the public hearing on Rose Corner.
Everybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate, what was your vote?
Me, aye.
Okay.
I thought those corrected.
Was Charlie a nay?
Yes, Charlie was a nay.
Charlie was a nay.
All right, I move to approve the Selectmen's Non-Public and Public Meeting Minutes dated September 22, 2020.